Uh!
Alright, I'm live.
I'm so spasm, I'm sorry.
Oh, you were, you were trying to set up your life?
Yep, I'm live, I'm good.
Get off the fucking car!
What are y'all doing? Oh my god. Alright, oh wait, hello. I don't have keys.
The hell?
There you go. It's unlocked.
Oh god, don't get me in front.
Leave it at the bike sack. So, you're gonna head to 327. Ryan.
Okay. Is it already marked on mine?
Damn, maybe take a picture of this?
Can you mark it for you?
I already marked it.
I haven't marked it the exact deli.
The exact deli? It said in 327.
I need to...
No, 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 I'll show, here, hold up. Let me mark it, take off the mark. And I'll mark it quick.
Oh, I found it, I found the mark.
You got it, okay.
There you go, yep, we're good.
Alright, let's go.
Oh yeah, 327.
I'm gonna go ahead and...
Be careful on the roads.
Like that.
Yeah, like that, exactly like that.
I would like to get all traffic stopped there.
Hey Zach.
Alright, so what?
You watching me?
Yeah.
So, last time I was gone... I got into like a five-car pursuit. Wrecked it, rolled the truck.
I just stay behind Ryan at all times.
And got out, had my hands up, and they arrested me, and they asked me, "What's going on?" I did lie about coke, I did lie about that to the mayor's son, or about the mayor's son. Like, "This guy's on coke," and I typed in the T slash me, "Yep, coke on him." Like, "Where'd you get it?"
I couldn't turn, that's my bad.
Slow down on the roads, my guy.
Mayor's son for throwing people off buildings and cocaine.
Just stay behind him, you don't have to be exactly behind.
I just don't want, I just don't want to like, take forever and someone pull out. That's why I'm trying to get there as fast as I can.
Do you want me to drive?
Nah, I got it.
It's green, John.
Shut up!
It's green, John! Alright, how many people are here?
Looks green to me.
Uh, one, two, three, three cars so far. Make sure your car's locked.
Yeah, I know.
Also, make sure, remind me every time to put on my seatbelt if we're doing something crazy.
Yep, I will.
I'm gonna get me a fucking capicole.
Alright, alright Lou, clipboard's out, John clipboard out.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be taking a smoke.
Yeah, T slash E space clipboard. You gonna take a smoke skis? I'm about to take a smoke skis there.
Give me one second.
I gotta finish the cigarette, I'll stand right outside, well, I finished the cigarette.
Oh, I put smokes.
Hey guys, what's going on? You got like two minutes of your time, real quicks? Oh detectives, I didn't see that, how you guys doing?
Just tell, just tell them that you're doing surveys for...
I'm doing surveys for uh, city council of a potential mayoral candidate, and we're just wondering uh, on a scale of one to five stars, how was your experience here and what can they improve on? The pricing? Oh my gods, yep, I agree with you.
I'm gonna go in there and join them real quick.
Sixty-five dollars for, okay, let me put this down real quick. For forty dollars, holy crap!
Forty dollars for a pack of cigarettes?
For a carton, yeah, you can get a carton for like, nine bucks.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah, you can get a pie for like, a carton for nine bucks, okay, this is absurd, we might have to go investigate this. Algonquin's more price gouging?
Algonquin's the fucking...
That's our territory too, right?
It's the fucking day.
Yeah.
Who are you voting for, Matt? Or you said you're running?
I'm, uh, my name's Harold Claxton, I'm running for uh...
This is the candidate right here.
Who, who, who endorsed for mayoral candidate?
Right now, I was gonna Sook and Maya.
Get the fuck outta my face, Ziggler's better.
Who's Ziggler?
Fuck Ziggler.
Fuck Ziggler.
Well, thanks for these prices for you though. We will correct these prices right now, oh god.
You see all that shit on Sook and Maya on the news? Slick like stick?
Oh yeah, fuck that guy. Yeah, fuck that guy, we're against him.
Liberty Tree and the Daily Globe, seriously?
Fake news, fake news my ass.
I'm gonna be quiet, like, this is quiet. This is Daniel Ziggler's city. Please, Ziggler's not a goof faced piece of shit.
This is exactly why Harold's here. To make this liberty city run again.
This is a Ziggler city.
Listen, the mayor ca- the mayor campaign, the city council are two completely different things.
Mayor can't do shit about that.
I totally respect your opinion and your candidate position. But we're simply here to make everything better.
Alright, man, one person at a time, please.
Put these corrupt cops off. And that's exactly why we don't like them, because, because you're, you're probably a corrupt cop yourself.
You think I'm corrupt?
Absolutely, so. Isn't, isn't he the one who took pictures in front of police?
Oh, see, see? He's the one that, he's the one that... No, it's not a threat, I'm telling you to go to Bohan, that's where you see the corrupt. The corrupt pieces of shit civilians out, if you could even call them civilians, that are causing all the problems out there? We have to off our playing field in order to fight back on that.
You see, I'll calm down, that's why I was hired, I was hired.
And Alex Sook and Maya, he's the one that fucking takes photos with auxiliary officers, tuning off artillery officers.
See, I'm here to help you guys.
You don't know shit about, you don't know shit about the mayor's son.
Calm down, I don't know all this crap all about.
You shut the fuck up.
Man, 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 calm down for just a second. I was here for mayoral stuff.
I remember you, I remember you two fucks, you know what? I remember you two fucks, I'm the one, uh, you two ones that fucking giving out all the bullshit information, we don't even have a ginger rubs. Oh yeah, uh-huh, well guess what? He was actually brown haired. Well, you should've given that information effectively.
Anyway, but on a scale of one to five, you know, your experience here at the store, what can we improve on?
Miss, no, no. I don't give two shits about, I don't give two shits about that, now you're coming in because you're giving out false information to throw off the case. Oh yeah, oh yeah, is that the case? Yep.
Hey Johnny, Johnny, Johnny back up, go, go, go back in. I must say, all, all of this stuff has been recorded on my Walkman.
Oh yeah.
Just, just so you guys know. Well, it's in my pockets, that's why it's called a Walkman.
Hey, so do you mind if I talk to you probably over in this corner?
Me?
Yeah, yeah, walk me over quick.
Sure. Fucking corrupt cops, I tell you.
Listen, I'm, I'm sorry about them, they tend to get a little...
And they turned out to be corrupt, I...
I'm not really more into the manager role, I'm trying to just become the city council, just trying to make this place a little bit better.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't got a problem with you. Except, except you're a trusted candidate, but that's just you, and that's just your choice.
I'm coming.
I have a problem with this asshole, claiming he's, wait, claiming I'm a corrupt cop, when I'm trying to say that...
Hey Lou, do you mind backing up a little bit, I gotta...
Back the fuck up!
I'm here with you, so, these guys are loose cannons, you know, after the situations that just happened. You know, after the situation everyone's on edge, everyone's...
Don't move.
Everyone's on edge, I'm just saying.
Don't move.
You guys are awful management right now.
I'm just here to collect data, I'm just here to collect data's.
You guys are awful management right now.
Me, me and the mayor are all here is, is for the, for the people, we're just here to collect data's for the peoples, not, not...
Turn around, tough guy.
Yeah, turn around, tough guys. I need to back you up on here for the mayors, not yous, or they...
I'm moving.
The soon to be mayors.
Come with us.
I can barely hear you in the game, Ryan.
Alright, again, this is corrupt cops, we're just, we're just doing a...
Ask them why are you being arrested, ask them why are you being arrested.
We're just doing a campaign rally, that's all we're doing, just trying to help my friend out here, doing a campaign rally. And then you wanna take...
You're, you're going a little bit too far, Johnny. You got, you gotta...
Back it up, Tony Kail, before you make this shit up.
Freedom of speech, you know.
Lou, Lou, I need you to get back to the car.
It's ninety-six, we got our freedom of speech. Ninety-six, come on.
You didn't even read him his rights!
Corrupt cops, you didn't even read my rights.
You guys are awful, you guys are awful.
Uh, Johnny started it.
You wanted back the, I was literally having a conversation, you just got in there, bro, like, what the fuck?
You need to get the light, stick it down.
Zach, I told you, I was...
We're just here to gather data.
Ryan, you're security now, you have to get rid of that.
What?
I literally told you to back out of the conversation, you stayed there.
Matter of fact, go back there and pick that up.
I was trying to gather data.
I told you, we were having a private conversation.
Let's steal this guy first.
Okay, you didn't say...
I did.
This is exactly why.
Okay, maybe you did.
Exactly why the, uh, mayor got assassinated right here. You corrupt cops, you killed, you're the one that killed him.
Wait, he's a cop.
You're the piece of shit that fucking lied about it.
Harold, we got a mic.
Yeah, you know.
Good thing we got a mic on him.
You changed it to brown?
Good thing we got a mic on you.
No, we didn't lie about it. Your stories got more holes than a fucking piece of shit.
Oh no, we just, uh, we're just having a little...
I mean, I didn't mean to put that over there.
Yeah, Claxton, I'm applying for city council.
You're nothing more than a fucking shit that I step in.
Which one, this guy over here, Lou?
Hey, what's going on, I'm Lou.
Oh, sorry, this is my, this is my campaign manager, his name's Lou Pringles, he's uh, going around...
I'm like PR, campaign manager slash PR.
Security, that's what you're gonna do, you're gonna be working security. You're gonna be working security, you wait.
Well, mainly I'm just trying to city council, uh, make this world a little bit better place, man's just a little bit...
When I'm working security...
You got a mayor time?
Yeah, it's worse than I'm about to do to you now. Get outta my car.
Oh yeah, she was pu- she was pushing eighty, so, we're, we're trying to make this world a little bit better for her.
Yeah, we're trying to make it to where you guys get to help pick uh, the next situations, you know?
We get these off of you here. Oh yeah? This is where you're gonna beat me to death?
Oh yeah, that, that uh, bullet went straight through her head.
Oh god.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, we got in that trunk, huh? Prove to me that you are not corrupt.
I mean, I never got to meet him personally, but...
Prove to me I'm not corrupt? Prove to me you are not corrupt. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You mind uh, you mind if I uh, record you a little bit, just uh, get some feelings about how...
Orange to brown, you're sure it was orange, it's oranges the fucking size.
Just tell us what you like, what, what you like, what improves on, you know?
Don't fucking knock his hair, ugh!
We know the hospital needs improved on. Businesses need improved on a little bit, so...
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Oh, I, I apologize.
Piece of shit, scumbag, fucking cocksucker.
Oh no, not recording, not recording as it...
Fully anonymous.
We have, we have a clipboard, we're just uh, writing down people's responses to everything.
All anonymous.
Where's your clipboard at?
I got it right here.
Oh, it's blind to me.
Get the fuck out of my gonk! It's right here.
Go ahead and ask him if he wants it, also, I, I do apologize in advance to my security.
Stand up, gonk, I see you getting robbed, I'm gonna let it happen.
So, one of our main things is the hospital. If you haven't been to the hospital, if there's anything that can improve on, what do you...
Not safe anywhere for you.
What would you suggest?
Second fur cam quarter.
Oh my god.
I don't have nothing on me, it was my buddy that had, something on me.
Shut up. Say my what?
They're asking me, they're asking me, uh...
Shut up, you shut up! You mute, you mute and talk to them. Okay, let, yep, let me write that down. Yeah, we get a lot about not enough doctors and not enough boobies. Alright, John fucking blacked out, everything he said.
Oh, I, I'm fucking, there's so much shit going on in my house, plus this discord, plus the RP, Jesus Christ.
Hope you, I hope you like dress shoes in the mouth.
I gotta look them down like that, Ryan, what the fuck?
I can't wait to get you cops off the fucking street.
What's uh...
Yeah, I can't wait to take you out of the street.
This is really a place for boomers.
You'll be working security while they're on you.
It's a good show right here.
Don't you dare give me that hawk tool.
Hey, uh, okay, I'll just make sure you're there.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh god, they knocked, they knocked me out, I don't know if you...
So, people show up to Duke's Deli because they're open?
Hey, what's going on, buddy?
That's, that's AI, Lou.
Are you registered to vote?
Oh my god, Lou.
Yeah, they're definitely corrupt.
Don't forget to vote for uh...
Oh my god!
Why would you do that? There's yellow for you asshole. Fucking assholes, oh, they just took a piss on me, oh my god.
You're dead, John, I think you're dead.
Lou, you cannot be caught beating the fuck out of AIs, we're gonna get...
You mean locals? What's an AI?
They're corrupt, they took me to an alley.
I didn't say that out loud, you did.
They took me to an alley.
You talked in the accent, you gotta break accent in real life.
God damn it, John.
Hold on, I gotta take a piss. I'll take you with me though.
Oh my god, he's corrupt cop, man.
I'm coming to bathroom with me, you're gonna hear everything. What's up? Who's dead? Who's?
It's Roman Reigns' father, not his own.
Oh yeah.
Oh, that's Roman Reigns' dad, hey? Did you guys hear about Roman Reigns' dad dying?
Yeah, he passed away yesterday, that's...
Okay. We thought it was one of the craziest Samoans, is, is, was he one of the craziest Samoans?
The wild Samoans?
Wild Samoans, yeah, okay.
Was it Sika? Yeah, it was Sika, right?
Yeah. We're just saying that, cause we're late, because we bootlegged shit.
At least, at least it wasn't Ryan this time. Not really.
What did you hear about, like uh, like Mark Henry and all them, getting really pissed off because, right when, the, the whatever six...
Oh, the, yeah, the white six.
Yeah, and then they took a massive picture out of character?
Yeah. And let me...
I understand Mark Henry, the way Mark Henry put it, like, they spent millions of dollars on this character.
Are those two doing fucking drug deals?
Later, they fucking do that shit.
You're gonna do, you're gonna, you're gonna tell the fan no, like...
Well, I wouldn't take all of them to one restaurant. That's where we'd order in.
Reason number one, why we should legalize weed in Liberty City, one, it helps with coping.
Oh, cancer, yeah.
I said coping, but cancer works too.
I thought you said covid.
No, cancer, yeah.
Helps with covid, that hasn't happened yet, John.
And, and pain management, and focus.
Dog, I, I swear to god.
Cancer when they're on chemo, they can't eat.
Was Johnny dead, or is he just knocked out?
I'm knocked out.
We're gonna win this campaign.
Okay, rule number one, if I say...
Cancer's gonna be a big point.
If I say calm down, y'all gotta, y'all gotta back up, or else...
Harold's right, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Muscle with me, cause he, he's gonna see a cop and go, corrupt?
Yeah, if John does anything stupid, I'm just...
I'm lucky they didn't take me.
That's why you hire that guy, cause he's good at calling out corrupt cops, and I'll be...
And they were, they were.
I'll try to be the cop had to go one, and be like...
Oh, here we go, guys, here we go, here we go.
Oh. Hey, how's it going? Ah, gotcha, gotcha, let, let me know about uh, the prices, like the medical office, how it's like seventy-five dollars for a check-in, even though you didn't really do much there. If you get ran over, like seventy-five dollars is kinda nuts, don't you think? Oh my goodness.
What, what hospital are you at?
We're not at the hospital, we're still at the deli that you got arrested at.
Oh, okay.
Or corrupt it. Is this dude really doing drug deals in the fucking deli?
I'm gonna go order a sandwich.
Twenty bucks. Four fifteen.
You're looking good as my security guard, keep it up.
Bruh.
I'm fucking dead. I think it's prob- uh, I don't know. If we go to the fucking Bronx. No, it's not about the Bronx, it's Bohan, but it's the ghetto Bronx.
His name is Benny.
Wait, hold on, that may be the guy coming out, that's Benny.
Hey, how yous going?
You uh...
Guys, got maffles?
You in, you into any uh, elections going on? Oh, well, I'm applying for uh, city council, I'm saying, Claxton, just uh, trying to make this world a little bit of a better place. Why you look menacing over there?
I had to come out. There's prices that are right, I didn't know how to operate.
Just to see how I can make this place a little better. Oh, he, this is my security guard, his name's Ryan, he's just uh... To be honest, I don't know what the fuck he's doing.
Hey uh... Zach, what's your uh, what's your uh, ID?
Hey, you know, people can wear whatever pants they wanna wear, what was the question?
What's your ID?
Hey, Lou, go ahead and ask him some questions, real quick. My ID is two seven seven.
So, starting here, uh, how was your experience here at the delis, were the prices good, you know? One of our biggest campaign slots is, you know, the hospitals, you know, is there anything...
Don't bring up the boob.
That you experienced at, at the hospitals that...
Do you need me to write down?
That we need to fix? I suppose, good, good, that's good to hear.
Where, where's the deli?
Is there any, any other questions or concerns, you know, for the city, you know, for the mayor that can, that, that we can probably fix?
Three twenty-two.
Anything at all?
East to both. Ryan, get back to the car. Ryan, go back to the car.
Get your fucking ginger ass out of here.
My deepest apologies, he don't mean it.
Yeah, sorry about that, guys, he just looks like that.
Little bit too strict on that side. But I know, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to make this world a little bit better, you know, prices are too much around here, and uh, we gotta start working on some insurance for these veterans, cause there's a lot of homeless vets just showing up here.
Yeah, we're here for the peoples.
Oh my fucking god!
Calms down, I got this, guys.
Oh, you too. This is the worst fucking campaign management I've ever had in my entire life.
We're not doing good.
I'm not winning, that's, that's just how I'm seeing it now.
Well, I'm sure it's a popularity contest, and you're definitely not winning, start, but...
I can't be popular when I have a fucking bodyguard.
To be fair, okay, to be fair, the Democratic Party is, is, like, and the cops... Lou and Harold, you all have a problem.
John, where are you?
You can't get in the car, cause John's gone. Yeah, I'm coming to you guys.
Oh no.
Yeah, I locked it.
So, John gets too strict to find corrupt cops, so Lou likes to beat up fucking NPCs. And then fucking...
No one saw that.
You told me to be your bodyguard, I'm beating my bodyguard.
Doesn't mean you fucking stare down at people and get angry about it, and then punch me in the...
I didn't mean to, that was a muscle spasm.
Well, you just got, you just gotta just fucking look at him, just, don't, don't fucking stare down at him like he's a fucking menace.
No, I, well, I, I'm doing my job, I'm supposed to look menacing. Yep.
Well, try a little bit lighter, because they ain't doing anything crazy. Until they do something crazy, then you can look menacing.
No, I was just, that's my job, and then I, see, when the other guy said, "What's he looking menacing for?", I calmed down, and he said hello, and I said hello, like, nodded him back, saying hello, and then I calmed down. This guy just right out the gate started being an asshole.
He didn't mention your pants, but it's, it's fucking pants, get over it.
Yeah, that pissed me off.
Nice pants, fucking nice, they're fancy.
I paid a hundred dollars for these pants.
I don't give a fuck how much you pay for it. We gotta be better management, come on now, I'm trying to win here.
I am being, I'm doing my job!
We are the spotlight of Liberty City.
You know, you know you can talk, you, you don't have, don't have to do the meat thing.
No, no, I'm, I'm mute, I'm mute. I'm your mute guy, to like, like, meet people, and then I'll be like...
Now we gotta wait for John to get back.
I'm on the bridge.
And I guess we're going to fucking Bohan and losing our minds.
I'm on the bridge. That's cool.
So again, Lou and John.
Another guy right here, Zach.
He's already running, I ain't catching him, I'll wait till he comes out. Anyways, what?
I wanna see it dry, like, let it look like dry.
What? Shut the fuck up, god damn it.
She, I dyed her hair, I'm sorry. Oh god.
What happened? Fucking, fucking Robbie test, busted.
I got it.
You gotta do slash.
I got it. I'm excited to see it. Oh my gosh.
You excited to see me bust?
No, not you, not you.
Alright!
You know what, Zach, how much money you got on you?
Fucking negatives.
Okay, giggity over there, how much money you got on you?
No idea. I have no fucking idea, how do I, how do I find that out?
T slash cash.
I got thirty-three dollars.
Four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Alright, you know what would make people probably vote for you? Go in there and buy something. Instead of just standing out here.
Like, well, like, buy something for them, or just buy something?
No, buy something from them.
Oh.
From them. Go, 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 go.
On behalf of Harold.
You got thirty-three dollars, you could do it, go ahead.
I am not wasting thirty-three dollars on buying something at a grocery store.
You are not wasting thirty-three dollars, it's not that much.
Lou Pringles has four hundred dollars, he'll do it.
Ask Lou to buy it, go, but go in there with him.
He literally just did, you're not listening!
Go in there with him!
He's buying on behalf of Harold Claxton, he's my manager, he buys stuff for me anyways.
I know, Zach, but you're not understanding, go in there and talk still, go in there and go in with him.
Oh, there's two employees.
Oh, there's two employees, go!
To the left and one at the counter.
Come on, security.
Three twenty-two.
I can't hear what's going on.
It's the little yellow, it's the yellow logo with the guy holding his hand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh hey, how's it going?
Got me a slice.
Oh, I'm doing pretty good, my name's Harold Claxton, I'm running for the city council.
Hey, what's going on?
This is all mine. So uh, you mind if I ask you a few questions?
I'm gonna look in the menu real quick.
Thoughts on Liberty City?
Can I get a dozen croissants?
Oh, great to meet you, first of all, um, majority of my questions are mainly about... Yeah, like, medical expenses and insurance, oh hey, I, sorry, didn't mean to...
Let me get three drinks.
Name's Harold Claxton, I'm running for a city council, just trying to survey people, see what thoughts on Liberty City.
I'm gonna have to meet you.
This is one of my managers, John.
Wrong button.
I appreciate it.
Death and, where's death and?
So, as you know, whenever you go into the hospitals, it's seventy-five dollars to get checked in, regardless if you got stabbed, ran over, nothing that you did, right? You guys... I'm sorry?
It should be free.
Exactly.
I I mean, the freeness. I feel like the free, okay, yeah, so that's where my insurance comes in. Not only for you guys, but for those veterans that are outside. If we have vets that are just homeless, we we don't need that. They served the wars, they've done tours. They deserve a little bit better. I feel like that we definitely need insurance for them, but not only that, if you guys got stabbed or ran over and it wasn't even your fault, then yeah, obviously it should be covered.
Yeah, for sure. I feel like. I feel like the sanitation department should get some insurance too. Because that job, especially up in Bohan, shit gets dangerous up there. People be getting hurt all the time.
Oh, yeah, I bet. That's a very, uh, dangerous area. We're about to go up there here shortly just to get to know the town.
Yeah, be careful up there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Because I'm just trying to make Liberty City a better place for everybody. So if I can get you guys' votes, it would be highly appreciated. What what can I do to make at least this Duke's area a little bit better?
Honestly, it's a pretty, pretty solid area for now. I think. I think the worst parts of the city is definitely Bohan and then Holland. Holland seems to be a hotspot for crime.
Oh, yeah, we're trying to stop people from doing crime as well. Trying to get the police to better employment, Joe. You doing okay?
You good, Jack?
Me?
Uh, you're absolutely fine. But, uh, yeah, we're just trying to make this world a little bit better for everybody, especially with, uh, all the crime rates going on. Try to get everybody employment.
Understand it.
If we can come down to like minimum of forty-five dollars for medical check-ins, would that be a little bit easier on you guys?
I'd say so.
Okay, okay.
It's always a good sign. How we feel about insurance? Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
How much? How much is the insurance gonna be though?
It really all depends because I gotta get it through the mayor first, but if we can lower it down and get a little bit more beneficial depending on the situation, that'd be absolutely amazing. I mean, obviously, the insurance is not gonna cover if you stab yourself, but I mean, like I said, if you get stabbed by somebody or you get ran over because dipshits around here don't know how to fucking drive, let's be honest. We can definitely, uh, get something working there for you.
Yeah, it's Liberty City for you.
Speaking of risky drivers, did someone just fucking crash?
Probably.
Sorry, I just fucking hurt someone.
Probably.
Oh, yeah, the drivers out here, they're terrible. I think. Maybe making it. I don't even know. Maybe lowering those tolls would be nice as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. How much did you say? I'm so sorry.
Eight fucking dollars, man.
Eight dollars for tolls? We could probably try to cut that down by half.
I got that written down.
I'm doing a lot of three sixty's over here.
And then, uh, lower tolls. Exactly. Those tolls gotta be lowered. None way too much for no reason.
Five dollar tolls, that's. I I would say that's a that's a pretty fair.
If we can cut it down by half. For at least five dollars and make it a little bit better for you guys.
Forty-five.
I also like. I have to apologize in advance. This is my security right in the back. He just likes to keep an eye, you know?
Oh, yeah, you're good.
Okay, understandable.
If you guys ever have any questions or you guys, uh, need anything fixed around here, please let me know.
Thank you.
And what was your name again?
Okay, come back. Oh, my my name is Harold Claxton.
Harold Claxton.
Harold Claxton. I think we got voters here.
All right, well, I appreciate your time, boys. You guys have a great night, all right? Stay safe. Yeah, of course.
Have a good night, lads.
All right, there we go. Two votes. Piece of cake. Didn't have to worry about shit. Just had to.
Their only question or their only thing was something about like weapons license because they they can't get a weapon to defend their store.
That's oh my God. That brings up the topic of, um, yesterday when I was talking to Alexander because one of the cops said that they only get like specific guns. While the other other cops get like these fucking OP guns.
Yeah, so that someone can use.
Oh, yeah, they don't need to be stuck with fucking revolvers. Raise them up.
So I tried to do a survey. It's like you did the survey. It's like, what what else can we talk about? What else you guys need? What can we ask of the mayor, the the future mayor? So, well, we can use more guns or a gun.
Oh, what part? Hmm, let's let's go middle Bohan. Just go straight to four oh four mark.
We drive around to see if there's civs there first.
Yeah, yeah.
If not, we RP.
Buckle up because I don't trust anybody's driving.
If not, we can RP like T slash, uh, GME, I think, is what we can.
And be like.
Did a drive-through whatever Bohannon. Got their support.
As long as we got some people's support.
Oh, my Jesus Christ, John.
If we can get, because we we got two people's support in Dukes. Besides those other corrupt people, at least we know who the corrupt.
Yeah, little stuff like this gives us progress.
Oh, here's a toll.
I feel like if we can get the whole Bohan area to support us.
We need to write down these like little things that they want to so we can in like your press conference.
Oh, I haven't written down on my actual.
Okay.
Oh, hello.
Oh, my God. That is not your fault. They they auto spawn right there.
Like lighter lighter weapon laws for convenience store owners.
Lighter, so I got so far I can write that down. Lighter weapon laws, um, equal pay.
Business owners.
Equal pay for all business.
Be almost crashed.
Um. Medic bills and toll bills cheaper.
Oh, my God.
So I have for medic forty-five dollars, which feels like thirty dollars out. And then for tolls, instead of doing eight dollars, we can try to do forty-five dollars. I know a majority of these that we're doing probably won't be approved, but as long as if we work with Alexander as mayor. But if Alexander wins, because we're still working with him regardless, we won't tell anybody who we're working with. Because I feel like that's just gonna give a major L. Yeah, but if Alexander wins, right?
Okay.
Then we can definitely get a huge vast of what we're working on to actually go through.
I, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I feel like, uh, we should explain the on the camp, like we're doing a campaign and then explain what we're actually willing to. What we're actually willing to put down and then they'll.
That that's what I was trying doing whenever I was talking to those two. Just be like, you know, this shit happens. This is my solution to it, you know?
Is there a reason why we're going here?
Oh, just drive around. Sorry. I I just did.
Actually going around talking to.
I just went to the Bohan area. So just drive around Bohan, see if we can find any actual locals. Medic. Four to five dollar tolls. I'm writing this down on paper too. Just in case I can't pull up my notepad fast and I'm on computer.
Yeah, that shit should be like a dollar in the nineties.
Equal. Business pay. What was the other thing that you just said? Gun laws?
Gun laws. Yeah, he said lower gun.
Yeah, gun laws for the business owners.
Gun laws.
Hey, there's someone at the, uh, Burger Shot.
Let's stop right there.
Yeah.
This looks like a random car. Is there somebody there?
No, I don't think that's a random car. That looks custom, bro.
God damn it, I'm stuck in the car again. Fuck it. Why is it always that like I'm doing emo?
See what this is? Is anybody here?
Can I get the six pound heart stopper, please?
Hello, anybody working tonight?
Yeah, go on back there, check.
Let me check the drive-throughs.
I I I'm not a city councilman. I can't just go back there.
I I will.
Uh, Lou, go check the bathrooms. While I write this down. Gun laws.
No one back here.
Can't get into the bathrooms.
Um.
Yeah, there's just no one here.
I wish we I wish as a city council, even though it's like impossible because of the game, I wish we could work on two times.
I know, right?
Fuck, that's not actually a game involved.
I'm gonna fly into the city faster. I cannot control the airport.
I'm I'm just I'm gonna put airport problems and just see if they'll fucking laugh at it.
No, like.
I highly doubt like that's never gonna change.
No, because that's that has to do with Murphy.
I'm gonna look at advertisements to see what's going on in the city right now.
Do that. I might make my own like little, uh.
Yeah, there's someone sees.
All right, let's let's pop back in, Ryan.
What?
Yeah, I'll go.
Pop back in the car.
Well, he's he's on his bike.
I'm on my bike. Give me.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. He's in bike.
I'm looking at something. Give me a second.
Anybody at the strip club? Do we really want to go in there?
Oh, yeah, let's let's go do that. Let's campaign at the strip club. Get those people there.
Martellis. We missed Martellis. We missed a car show. Yeah, I know. Party in car show at the Den of Sin.
Yeah, it didn't last long. No, it didn't last long. Um, more car events. That's another thing that I should wrote down.
Oh, it's locked.
All right, so nobody's there. All right, back in the car, boys. Alex, I really hope we can find at least two people in Bohan that we can actually talk to.
There's a car, uh, that may have been.
Okay.
A local. Yeah, locals go first.
So, Zach.
Huh?
People seem to hate Schlick and Maya like a lot.
There's a good, there's a vast.
Except the cops.
It's like.
But here here's the thing though, because Schlick and Maya is the highest rated right now to be mayor.
He's crooked. We gotta spread it. He's crooked.
I get it. I get what they're trying to do. Schlick and Maya we're working for.
I get what they're trying to. In real life, they're trying to make, uh, Alex like Trump where everyone hates him.
Yeah, yeah.
I I get I get.
We all know he's the most voted. That's that's the good thing.
Exactly. Guys, I told you to wait for me. Where the fuck did you go?
We're just driving around Bohan. We're not in a specific area.
Okay.
I'll let you know if we stop anywhere though. Just drive around, see if we can find any actual locals.
Or I wanna go right.
I don't talk. How is this gonna work for me?
I'm just saying if you see anybody, just tell tell you tell us where you pulled up.
Yeah, just tell us on Discord. You don't have to.
Um, or just say in this fucking Discord call.
That's what I mean.
Um, okay.
Yeah, I'm glad you opened this up.
I think, um, what would Bohan need?
Triangle Club's closed.
Don't mess with Bohan?
Feel like they need more. Is there any employment that you can do in Bohan? Besides a firefighter is what I'm looking at or or Burger Shot. There's a car right there. I don't think anybody. Wait, is there somebody in that car?
I'm gonna see if there's a.
No, okay. False alarm. Sorry.
There is no one at the fire department.
Thanks, and.
I'll check all the shops.
This is probably the highest crime area. He said this one and fucking what was it?
I have to go back to Algonquin.
Oh, hey.
I mean, this. Wait a minute, who was that?
Yeah.
That garage opening up?
Is that a random dude?
I think it is.
Hey, buddy, how you doing?
Yeah, it's Karen Sager.
Where are you guys at?
I think he's an AI. He's an AI.
Yeah, it's a local.
Oh, guys, I got a guy.
I don't think he is. I don't think he is.
You got a guy? Get back in, get back in.
Yep, I got a guy. Back at Burger Shot Mustang, black and white stripes.
Oh, yeah.
Were we just there though?
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, but there's he just pulled up.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Where's the Burger Shot? I totally forgot.
I don't want him to think I'm following him. He's driving away now. I don't want him to think I'm following. I'm gonna spook him.
Well, we.
But it's a black and white Mustang. Those never show up.
Black and white Mustang. Well, if we find it, we won't try to fucking follow it. We'll just.
That's weird.
Trying to think of what Bohan needs. The only thing I can think of is they actually need employment here besides fucking fire station. And a Burger Shot. There's a police station here actually, but. Oh, go check the police station actually.
There's a gondola. Oh, wait, no, that's that's Ryan.
Let's let's go pull to the police station. To the left, to the left. You're going the wrong way.
Okay, he's okay.
John, what? What is your blinker? Sorry, Shelby.
Sorry, you guys told me to go to Burger Shot.
Well, I made a target for Burger Shot and that's why I was telling you to go back to.
Oh, my God, Johns, let's go.
You don't have to stay behind those cars.
Oh, hey, guys. I thought that was you. Because John said, oh, that's Ryan.
There's two cars here. There might be somebody actually in the station. Maybe we can top the.
There's a bunch of cops. There's a cop right here standing by his cop car.
Oh, bet. All right, here we go.
Where? Okay.
Inside. Oh, and yeah.
Should I say good morning? Is it like morning?
How you doing?
Yes. Hey, how's it going, officers? How are y'all doing on this fine day? Oh, pretty good. My name's Harold Claxton. I'm, uh, running for city council. You guys mind if I ask you a few questions?
And we might ask some answers.
I'm sorry?
I said we might ask some answers.
All right, sounds good. Go go ahead and start us off there, Lou. While I figure this out.
So is there anything in the city that you think could be refined, you know, that's not specifically five stars, you know, that we we can possibly make five stars?
Trash system.
Trash system?
You see that? Our garbage guy quit. Oh, the trash system.
Oh, yeah, I see all that over there. Okay, that's a good one. It's the first time we got something like this.
That's that actually works out. We need, uh, uh, better employment. Yeah, more employment in the city. So that works out.
We could help a lot. Someone write this down.
I've already wrote that down. So so let me ask you guys a question. What's you guys' thoughts on the, uh, wages here at the hospital? Seventy-five dollars check-in?
Well, uh, we're government employees, so we we really don't get hit with that.
Oh, yeah. Well, I how about the others? What what do you think about, uh, other people? Mind that they have to either get ran over or stabbed and they have to pay seventy-five dollars to fix themselves?
Well, for for the actual individuals that actually need medical attention and there's not a doctor that it's a kick in the balls, but for the, you know, wackos that just do whack shit. Just to be doing it now and. Seems kind of fair. Okay, okay. We we might look into a solution for that to separate those twos.
Yes, it's a crazy world out there. I'm trying to make this a little bit better by implying insurance to those people that need, especially when those people get stabbed or ran over. Especially on those medicals are a little bit high. Seventy-five dollars, the ceiling is nuts. I think forty-five would be a better option.
It's it's like, uh, you know, like medical abuse, you know? I think I think we can do something about that for them, but the real people who needs it, I think we can maybe cut down on some of them prices.
Yeah, yeah.
We're definitely gonna try to fix things around here, especially with those airport problems that people have trying to get into the city. It's wild.
Yeah, yeah, people do have some, uh, flight issues sometimes. They book a flight and then, you know, sometimes it gets delayed or canceled.
And it gets canceled. We gotta wait until the next day to get in.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Liberty City's pretty popular.
We're trying our best to hopefully fix that.
Yeah, yeah, understandable, understandable.
Not just that, we're trying to, uh, fix it to make equal business pay. So not everybody's supposed to be so specific with how much they get paid. I think everybody should get paid equally for doing a good job.
What you mean by that?
I mean, you know, medics only get like seventy-five to one hundred dollars for what they do. As far as I'm aware, I'm not very certain. I've been told that the cops get paid a little bit more than they do. I feel like equal pay is a little bit better.
Uh, I I can't really speak on that. That's between if you come here, that's between you and our union.
Oh, yeah, that's that's completely understandable.
I mean, sometimes, I'm I mean, no, no disrespect, officers, but sometimes you gotta do some EMS stuffs on yourself, so. Yeah, this is true. This is true, but you know, I ain't trying to throw nobody underneath the bus. Fire departments understand like a motherfucker. When you guys do stuff like that, you guys deserve extra pay for doing stuff like that too. Yeah, of course. But, you know, them them ambulance people are not trained to be like in the line of duty and stuff, but when they come in line of duties, you know, they deserve a little bit, you know?
See, that's what we, that's what we believe in. Everyone's doing roughly the same job where they're saving the city, you know? So that's why we think it should be an equal play and equal pay, you know?
Like a like a hazardous duty pays, you know?
I feel like if everybody got equal pay, we would be able to get a lot more medics than just two to three as far as I've seen in the city.
I if you speak, if we're being frank here, uh, the fire department, you know, they 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 I'm pretty sure they got their own union. They they just need to figure out a good a good pay scale. And that's that's basically it. Because I I I do feel like. So you're saying maybe 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 we need to work with the unions. Yo, you guys have like a union reps we could talk to and. Uh. Maybe help everybody else, you know? Uh, I don't think we got one on right now, but, uh. Hold on, let me let me check. Hold on.
So forty-five medic.
If they not here right now, maybe we'll speak to them on later dates, no matter what, but, you know. We're trying to do what's best for everybody. You know, we're kind of with the unions, you know? We we definitely support unions. Right? Harold's?
Well, he he he's currently talking to somebody. He can't keep talking to him while he's trying to figure this out.
Oh, well, I was telling you that in Discord.
Oh? Oh, there's two cops out there. Hey, uh, one of one of you guys go up to the cops.
Please sit down with them. On the next side of thing of pain and everything like that.
How you how you doing, officer?
How you doing, man?
Hey, uh, I'm.
Oh, yeah, of course, of course.
Buddy over there.
Um, I do have a few more things here. Obviously, with this town, we we need a little bit more on the laws. How do you what's your thoughts about the lowering gun laws?
Anything here that's like maybe should be five stars, but it's really like in reality, two stars.
Sorry, so we can.
Oh, yeah, I completely understand that.
And we covered a lot about the hospital expenses, you know, we we talked about you guys' unions and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I mean, both. I you gotta be honest. This this place is a little bit crazy. I mean, people tend to do whatever the fuck they want to do. You can't really deny that. I'm saying specifically in laws of like, let's say, for example, you're working at a store, right? You're working at the twenty-four seven.
So new new.
But they get rough. They don't. They can't do anything. They got no guns. I feel like they would be necessary to have guns.
I'd like to have a standard issue M sixteen.
Okay, new equipment, new weapons. Let me write this down.
Let me get a, uh.
Oh, yeah, I feel like we should definitely get a restricted.
You know what, man? We need some more variety.
A standard issue, hmm, I'm thinking, uh.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Get standard issue Uzi. We need some more variety in restaurants around here, man.
Yeah, yeah, I got I got you. I got you. See, that's that's one of the things that, uh, that we're working on is more employment for the city. So we can we build more restaurants and, uh, definitely be some more employment. We're trying to get, uh, trying to get some trash units to a garage guy or a garbage guy. Uh, I guess now you're one of your officers over there said that, uh, you had one quit recently and now your trash is all all scattered.
Oh, yeah, it's been all over the place. Definitely need some more people coming over here to pick this stuff up. It's dirty over. I think I think it's because they don't get paid enough anymore, you know? Yeah, that is true, man. They've been striking. Y'all need to they need to get paid.
Work on, uh, equality pay. You know, everyone's out here saving the city. So and one of our one of our things is we should, we think that. Maybe we can talk to the under union and where everybody gets paid equally that way because every everybody's out here saving the city. You guys are out here, you know, you're you're putting putting away crimes. Uh, medic is is out here saving lives and then same with, uh, fire department. They're out here saving lives as well. And you guys are out here all doing the same thing, saving the city.
And you're doing a great job of it, by the way. And we want to make it best for you. That's why we ask your opinions because you guys are very important to our communities.
Absolutely, man. It's good what y'all are doing, coming out here and asking the community, y'all, about what y'all can improve on.
Oh, yeah, don't thank me. Thank thank, uh, the the runner.
Yeah, right.
Harold is totally for y'all.
Uh, in the on the white suit, all white suit.
On the white suit, okay. Uh, yeah, that's all I got for right now. That's all I can think of.
Okay, we we very very much value you guys' opinions, you know? And we'll do our best to do the best we can to bring this to y'all.
All right, so so. I will appreciate y'all.
Yes, if that's it, if that's it, if that's all you got, well, well, that's guys cool. You know, have a great day, officers.
At the end of the day, I just want everybody happy, you know? This is a nice town. Liberty City's amazing. We just wanna make it better for each and every single person.
Those officers have some great input.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, those those two down there?
Oh, yeah, we we got it all written down.
And a little more.
I appreciate you, boys. And I thank you again, cops, for, uh, taking the time to answer a few of my questions.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.[1722.12] Well, you guys have a great day. You guys take care. Be safe.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, you do the same.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
One of the cops said, how about a Uzi?
Thank you for your input, officers. Y'all have a great day.
Zach, one of the, one of the cops said, yeah, um, how about the police need to get new equipment? How about a Uzi? Yeah, I was sure it was getting sketchy.
Sorry, it's so fucking hard to play this game, right? And then to like hear Johnny having a conversation over while I'm already hearing his conversation in the background?
Yeah, I know.
Alright, so, we got, did you guys tell them to get, for uh, for us to get, for me to get their votes?
Oh, shoot.
It's alright, at least they know what our, what our goal is.
Yeah, they they.
I forgot I was Deppens. So what are you running for? City Councilor? City Council, okay, yes. Better remember that.
I did write down new cars and gun. I saw you write that.
Yep, he he wanted like a newer, newer cruisers and a better weapon systems.
Yeah, he's like, maybe.
Better weapons system does sound nice.
I did say Uzi, but I didn't write down Uzi.
Yeah, he's like, maybe an Uzi?
Let's drive, let's drive around a little more in Bohan, since it is the daytime, and if we can't find anybody then, then we'll go back to the.
That shit, we got the PD. That's a, that's a good start.
Really good, that's really good.
We got like, what, four of them, five of them?
Four of them.
If I can put um in a, a uh recommendation, I think we should go to every PD.
Are those flying cars up in the sky back by that building, going behind that building?
Let's go to the. Uh, is there a PD next to Duke's? No, there's not. There's one all the way down in Outlook, but that's not our area.
Well, even if it's not our area, I think we should still go to these places to like get your vote.
Let's go in the main city first, and then we'll go down to the other area. So, go to uh where the middle park is near Lancaster, two twenty-two. Go to that police station. We'll meet you there.
I'm gonna just follow you.
That works too. Just don't be too fast, because we're trying to be.
Literally looking right behind, I'm just gonna stay right behind you. Just do- John, don't break drastically.
So, forty-five dollars for medical bills for insurance people, forty-five dollar tolls, because they're expensive. Insurance for the homeless and anybody that tends to get their ass beat, um, equal business pay.
For the police department.
Lowering the gun laws. I talked to the police about those. They think it's a good idea, but like, in terms of lowering.
For business owners only.
Yes, for for people that actually have a stable job here, who actually need guns, not freewillers who wanna have a gun just for the buck.
Like a shotgun behind the counter or something.
They loved my idea of airport problem being fixed.
Yeah, I know, right?
Got my vote.
More employment, more car events, I didn't bring up, but I did.
That was something that the, the other two officers said. He's like, we need more restaurants.
I'm gonna get a little high.
Yeah, I told him, I was like, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to say that, or mention that, or write it down.
Yeah, uh, yeah, he said, we need more restaurants. We need more stuff to do here. I'm like, alright.
Is there a chicken place? Do, do they do the chicken place here?
Oh, Clucking Bell?
The Lucky, yeah, Clucking Bell.
I think so, yeah.
If they don't do that, I I haven't seen one. If they do that, we need to add more.
They don't, they only have burgers. Stay in line, stay in line, yeah. Um.
We got Clucking Bell, we got Burger Shot.
New cars, gun variety, more restaurants. That's what, that's what we have so far.
We can't do Up and Out, because that's, that's just In-N-Out Burger, and that's not on.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
Trash guy.
Hey, doing trash man?
Should we talk to him? Should we talk to him?
Yeah, go for it. Let's pull over, let's pull over. Yeah, just a moment. Pull, pull him off, pull him off the road.
Pull him off the road.
We got Harold's here, running for city councils, and we're just going around, you know, asking what, what, you know, what you think the city could use, you know, to make it better.
Can I, can I walk over?
Where, where'd he go? Where, where'd he go? Where'd he go? There's another guy.
Like a rat swatter.
More pest disposal.
Pesticide.
Hey, how's it going?
Don't know how it's going.
Going good. Hey, uh.
Oh, yeah, we definitely need to clean out this area here. Oh, yeah, my name is Harold. I'm running for uh city council. Do I got your vote?
To see uh if you have any suggestions, if there's anything that's, you know, maybe a five star, should be a five star. But it's reality, it's like a two star, or maybe something that we need in the city, or maybe something that we should improve on.
Get, Lou, get out of the road, please.
Sorry, my apologies. I was busy writing, so I was writing down stuff.
They, these whole medical bills, regardless if you get stabbed, get ran over, I'm thinking we start a new insurance line for people that really need it. What's your thoughts on that?
If we, you, someone gets stabbed, right, like a medical bill.
So, so obviously, the, for example.
And uh then they have to go to the hospital, okay? So that's a, that's a seventy-five dollar fee right there.
So I think in terms of how much you, I wouldn't say necessarily like everybody starts off for maybe a couple bucks. I would say that it really depends on if they're uh employed, unemployed. I mean, we got a homeless man that I know that had three tours. He's currently homeless. He's of three tours, again, and he he he's homeless. He he has nowhere to go. I feel like it's a little bit of BS. Give him a little bit of insurance to help him out, especially with all the medical bills he has to pay.
Yes, keep it like, 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 like you said at first.
Forty-five?
Price, yeah.
Yep, forty-five. Yeah, see, that's why we're saying forty-five is like, is pretty fair, right? And then another thing, uh, we, I got here on my list is uh what we're trying to improve on is uh uh tolls. Uh, I guess the to- the tolls are eight dollars is what I've got here.
Yeah.
And uh, we're, we're trying to get, our goal right now is trying to get that to at least five dollars.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, I agree with it.
Okay, okay. Uh, do you think you, um, there's anything else that we, that we should uh improve on?
Uh, think of it like the tickets?
I mean, it's mainly just anything in general, mainly for the city.
For the city?
Yeah, like what would, what would you, what, is there something that, you know, I mean, I, you, I'm sure you probably need help with the trash? And that's some, that's another thing that we uh, we're, we're trying to do is get more employment down here in the, in the city, so that way we can get better jobs and get more jobs. Uh, we got, we already got something on the list, uh, of one of the uh, uh, I got someone's here that said.
Talk about how you're gonna help with ex-convicts getting jobs here.
In the city, so that way, um, they can have more jobs to do, and that's something that we're trying to do. And and also, we uh, we talked to the police already, and and they, and they said that uh, you know, you guys, you guys definitely need help in the trash. So that's another thing that we, we got down is uh, uh, we're, we're trying to better the employment, that's, that's for sure.
Yeah. What about like, like, uh, you got bowling? Do you got a bowling alley already? Like the bowling alley open?
Oh, I don't have that down. Let me write that down. Okay, you got anything else?
Uh.
He's really thinking hard, bro. I mean, we got, we got one, and that's a, and that's a really, that's a really good one right there, too.
Bowling alley?
Yeah, the bowling alley. I mean, we got, uh, like I said, is there, uh, is there anything that you think should be improved on in the city? Like, that, that, that should be five stars, but it's really two stars and should be improved on? Like, ma- maybe like potholes? We can try to get, and get rid of some of these potholes?
Uh, I mean, I be seeing like other bars and stuff I wouldn't ever see open.
Okay, you want, you want, okay, so bowling alley and a bar, alright, okay?
And uh. Like I said, more restaurants. Some of them, like, we probably see something open, though, like, I would go like, I always see like two open.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, it's a small city over here. That's what we're trying to work on.
Think uh, like a racetrack uh work?
Oh, I'll, I'll write it down.
Pink slips?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I saw that there was a car show earlier today. I, I was trying to get there, but I guess they closed up early. But yeah, uh, I'll, I'll write that down. A race strip, a race strip, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, like pink slip, car for car.
Pink slips, yeah, car for car, okay. Zach, you able to hear me?
She. What about the uh, the subway? Trains, train tickets?
Yeah, yeah, we, we can bring those down, yeah, absolutely.
Harold, you should bring, bring up employment. Hey, how's it going over here, Johnny? Nice to meet you. My name's Harold. I'm running for city council.
He's got a lot of good points. Uh, he says he wants uh, like a bowling alley, or maybe uh, maybe a, maybe a bar down here.
I was thinking about getting more car events around here, especially with uh, all this, all these amazing cars around here.
Yeah, he also, uh, he said that it's uh, he would like a, a racetrack down here, so that way you can race your pinks, pink slips.
Ooh, I'm a big race fan here. I totally agree with that one.
He, it's a, it's a, he's got some really good ideas here.
Well, damn, he had ideas I didn't even know I had, but I totally agree with that. Make your vote in, your boy Harold Claxton. We can definitely get something working out for you. Harold Claxton's here for the peoples.
Definitely here for the peoples.
I'm here for the whole Liberty City.
That's why we're out here talking to the community, seeing, seeing what they would like.
Look at that.
Is, is there anything else in Bohan majority that you would uh like to see improved?
Uh, I'm overthinking.
He takes a, he takes a while. Just give him a minute. He takes a while.
Oh, he's got a thing. Let him think.
I know, right?
And then like, uh, like, more like candy shops?
Hey, what you doing? The witch shops, I'm so sorry.
Like mechanic shops?
Running the traffics. Be careful, Sees. We definitely more mechanics around here. We are working on trying to get more employment in these cities, because we got four hospitals and only two medics.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was telling him. I'm sure he needs help, uh, help doing trash. We're trying to work on that.
That was actually something, uh, note we got from the police. We just talked to before us. We need uh more people in waste management.
Yeah, that's what I was telling him.
Yep, that'd be.
I would, I would definitely stop at the police station.
I'd be cleaning up Brooklyn too sometime. I don't know, see nobody go down there cleaning up Brooklyn, or not Brooklyn, but you know?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I, I feel like, I feel like a lot of people just doing this job don't get paid enough. We're trying to work on making equal pay for everybody, so that it's not always about, oh, cops get more pay because they do more.
Yeah, I mean, all you guys are taking care of the city. That's the thing. That, that's, you're all, you're all doing the same job. It, yeah, might be a little different. But this, uh, but the thing is, you guys are all taking care of the city at the end of the day, so it should be equal pay.
And also, one thing on the side note here, that's what we, we're getting a lot of, is uh, we need to legalize it. You know, the cannabis business.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, gotcha. I think that would, that would be great for our, oh, you know, it's exactly the cannabis, you know, I, I think it'd be great for taxes, you know, everybody would benefit from this.
You got, you got real, you got real quiet right there.
Well, I know you and your guy gotta get to getting all this garbage out of this city, so I appre- I appreciate your time, and I'm sorry for uh, hang up so much.
No, no problem.
Just wanna get everything down. You got some good ideas here. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yo, yo, be safe, okay?
True.
You twos. Damn, we are doing it right.
Oh, my god.
Yo, guys, quick question.
Votes, bro, yeah.
Uh, how do I change from like the range of my voice? Because I'm in whisper, and I don't know how I did that.
It's the, uh.
Find it so hard.
Uh, no, it's the, the, uh, uh, the button by, by one, by the number one.
Two, or the squiggly?
Okay, thank you.
Squiggly. Alright, so next up, we're going to the police hospital and near the park.
Okay, so do you, do you already marked it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just be careful on these roads, please.
I got maybe forty-five more minutes.
I have about, yeah, I'm about equal with that.
You gotta work at five, so.
Five, eight, yeah?
Last time I, yeah, last time I was fucking stayed up for three and had to work at five.
I'm gonna go to my state, but goddamn, I don't gonna fucking die at work.
Well, tomorrow's my Friday, so I, I can, I can sacrifice a little bit.
Tomorrow's still my Thursday.
I can do, I can do forty-five minutes, that's fine.
Alright, let's head to this police station, and then we'll probably meet back at the two oh two hospital. Just to see if anybody's got in there.
That's not.
Yeah, you gotta go take this right.
I thought, yeah.
So go to this police station. After that, we'll go back to the hospital, see if anybody's there. And if not, then we'll head to the precinct across the street where the police normally hang out. Sound good?
Sound good.
Yeah?
Awesome. So we got one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
Like eight votes so far for my name? I like the bowling alley and the racing idea. That'd be nice.
That was really good.
Oh, yeah, bowling alley would be fun.
He's like sitting there thinking.
Drag would be sweet.
Yeah, where the hell would we put a drag?
I don't know.
You know what we should do? Have a drag spot and a meat spot, like the same spot.
Why they have a stop sign?
Have a drag spot and have an oval around the drag spot, near the airstrip, maybe.
The airstrip would be a great idea, because people don't even use that area.
You know what'd be a great thing?
What?
Seeing if there's an MLO for um, like, fucking Pocono Raceway.
Like what, between uh, about three, two, six, there's that oval there?
Yeah. I see what you're talking about.
Three, two, six has that oval and then that long straight strip right next to it?
Down, John.
Maybe a community event where we can do that every now and then? That'd be a sweet community event, like OCRP does.
Do like something weekly, like racing or bowling or like car beats. That'd be really nice.
Well, they have a bowling alley.
Without any problems of like potential of people trying to shoot up the place.
Yeah, it's not, that's not like a no shoot them up RP zone. That's just strictly racing zone.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No RP besides that house inside of it.
We're fine. We gotta, we gotta go faster ways through this. Uh, just be careful on these roads. That's all I'm saying. You don't have to stop at every stoplight. It's the police station.
We do get pulled over and we, we should, we stop and interview those cops.
Talk to LCPD over here?
Yep.
That's the plan, if we can find anybody.
There's a cop over there. Hey, how you doing, officers? You got five minutes?
Let him pull in, let him pull in, let him pull in.
Oh, I'm, I'm blocking up. Let's go, Harold. What's your last name again?
Claxton. Hey, good morning, officer. How you doing?
You got a couple minutes of your times?
Uh, I have to go to a car chase. I'm sorry, guys.
Oh, no, I can.
Understandable. Just after you're done, let us know how we can make your car chase stuff, uh, you know, better, or anything better.
What do you mean?
Oh, there's another policeman right there.
My cl- client here, uh, Harold Claxton, he's running for, he's running for city council. Harold Claxton's right here.
Oh, hi, hi, sorry.
So we're just gonna do anything we can to improve the community, you know, officers and medical, everything, so go do your stuffs, you know?
Uh, Tyler, can you go handle that? I'm getting asked by these two.
Harassed!
Sounds like that pursuit's just retrapped.
There's a pursuit going, but we got six cops going inside.
Let's uh, let's get out of here. Let's head to uh.
Yeah.
Is this our area?
This is our area, unfortunately.
God, har- harassed!
I just pulled up my ID card again.
I can't get.
I can't get in the back. I can't get in.
And then X again.
Hold up.
The, eh, I'm telling you right now, the entire middle area of the map, this entire place is ours.
Go for it. Okay, there we go.
Police department had three cars pull up, but they're in a pursuit.
I didn't lock it. Yeah.
I definitely can't get in.
Alright, he's a gal. Okay, bye.
Try to uh, get your ass out.
Just lock and unlock.
New body in the dumpster?
What does that even mean? How's that an ad?
It said, I don't have keys.
That guy's gonna get the hat.
I'm in the car and you guys aren't.
I don't know. You got in, now we can't get in.
John, press X and X again. And then X again.
Jesus Christ, Lou, can we be professional?
You're pressing Y?
Yeah. Okay, it was because he was in the car.
Okay.
That's so random.
Shotgun!
I guess I'll let you have shotguns. I look more professional.
Back anyways.
Okay.
No, I'm, no, I'm staying in the back now.
We, we, we'll protect the main seats.
Alright, so two oh two hospital. We're, we're just gonna, we're just gonna cut to the hospital.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to dying kids, you know?
Oh, yeah, the people with cancer.
Even the.
Be careful on these roads here. You're next to a fucking police station.
I know you won't live another ten years, but we need your vote.
Huh?
Even the hospital's our thing?
Yeah, the in, this entire middle area.
Whole part is ours.
And Bohan.
Communities.
And Bohan and the Duke's. I like, I like how we have this whole fucking spot, bro. It's fucking nuts.
And all it took was Zach to say in the Discord server, I wanna become mayor. Zach, you gonna buy, after, after you, after you make it, get in, you gonna buy us some Grattis?
If I make money off of this shit, yeah.
You should. You're gonna be a public figure. Figure, you should make money off of it.
What the fuck is this car doing? Try to ride it. Try to go right. Get, get back in the car, Lou. What the fuck?
What you doing here? You, you need to step aside. You need to get out of here. Let's go on, move.
You're very unprofessional. Get the fuck in the car.
John, just go around him.
I'm trying. I gotta wait for him.
Fucking god damn it, Rob.
I was just R P N, I was just R P N.
You gotta be professional!
That was pretty professional. I asked nicely and they didn't reply.
Pick a lane and stay in it.
They were in our lane. We, we totally have a.
He's, he's following the thing that it's showing. Fuck it, John. Don't give a shit about the red and green. Let's go.
Oh my god.
Holy!
We had a green.
What the fuck was even that?
We had a green. We had a green. I don't know why we did that.
Oh my god, John!
His shit's really fucking.
I don't even know why I tried to improve the city.
I don't give a fuck about the red lights to the green.
Johnny boy, you gotta watch where the fuck you're going. You're gonna kill me.
I feel like I got thrown off a building near here.
Don't go a hundred and twenty. Jesus fucking Christ.
Yeah, I feel like I gotta throw off a building here too.
Kilometers.
In a past life. Oh god, John.
No cop, no stop. No cop, no stop.
Oh, good, John. That was a cop.
Where?
A hundred and twenty's really only like eighty.
Why are you stopping in the middle of the road?
Oh my god.
Oh, he stopped at a light. Oh, he's backing up.
He's backing up.
He's backing up. No, no. Oh, there's somebody in the road.
Oh.
Somebody fell out. Go, go, John, John, John.
Go, go, just go.
Just go. Okay.
Book it, book it, go.
At casual, at casual, we go.
Okay.
We're only on here till midnight. We gotta rush this shit.
Oh, that's right. We, we got businesses. I'm keeping an eye back there.
You know what we should do?
I think he's gonna try to pull Ryan over.
No, no.
He was, but he just turned. He's not going to him.
Okay, alright, we need to turn here.
We should go to the, uh, Rotterdam.
Okay, nope, don't turn.
Rotterdam's always dead unless it's fully open.
Is there anything, any, any place we can go to that put an ad out?
You, you could've gone downhill.
No, cause that was a one-way. I didn't want to do it. I was like, cause if there would've been a cop, we would've been screwed. I'm going around.
Rotterdam, bad idea. And then campaign wise, I don't, Alexander said he's putting campaigns out for us, but I don't know how he's doing it.
How the fu- alright, John, what's your blinker button?
I, I don't, I really don't know. I'm on controller.
There's a, I don't even know how to use Blinker, bro.
Yeah.
Oh, right by two O two.
Yeah, that's where we're going. We're gonna see if there's anybody in the hospital.
Oh, I know, this, I said.
I'm gonna park it. I'm gonna put my car in the garage too.
Can we, can we all disagree away until we get to a complete stop before jumping out? Alright, let's, let's, uh, let's get a few more votes in. Oh, there is one police that's chilling near the precinct, but I think he's in the courtroom.
There you go.
Three cars. How's it going?
How you doing, buddy?
And not much. My name's Harold Claxton. I'm, uh,
Nah, I, I, I talked to you. I was doing the garbage. I was just talking to you.
Oh, yeah, he's wearing new clothes.
Yeah, 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 I was just talking to you.
Oh, you off the clock now?
Yeah, I'm on the clock. Yeah, I ain't gonna lie. Yeah, my back hurting. I'm about to go home.
Hey, you worked hard. You worked really hard.
You worked, you worked hard.
Yeah, we, we thank you for everything, all your inputs and stuff, and we're gonna put that into place.
If he killing me.
Alright, go, go give you guys some rest. We're just gonna go talk to a few more people.
More up support for the citizens.
What the hell?
What did you sneeze on me?
Uh, there are no people in here. Uh, they, uh,
Sorry, it was, it was that lady. That lady just came up to me, sneezed on me, and then walked away. Can you believe that shit?
Oh, no, that's disrespectful.
That's so disrespectful.
Look, she coming, look, she coming back to sneeze on you again.
Oh god, oh god, don't you do it. Don't you get, don't you do it. Lady.
Alright, I'm going inside.
Oh, no, no, she walking fast. She walking fast. I, I, I don't like she's walking fast. You have a good day, though?
Yeah, me too. Hopefully, I'm not sick.
Let me go in first for safety.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 I'm about to go. Let me, yeah, 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 I'm right here.
Alright.
You should be good.
This is how we're gonna do it for now.
There are no doctors on duty.
Excuse me, sir, can I ask you, uh, you know, a couple of questions?
Alright, this is what we're gonna do. Ryan's gonna be in the front and Lou's gonna be behind Ryan. I'll be third and then John has to be behind me. That's how we're gonna do it for now. That's smart.
It does make sense.
This would be the perfect opportunity for me to have an AR, but you know what? We won't talk about it.
I'm gonna go look for the bathrooms.
Okay, you do that. I gotta take the actual IRL bathroom.
John, we definitely, you gotta give me some more Godfather subs later on.
Oh my god.
So, um, I'm gonna go IRL bathroom, so I'm gonna sit here and if anybody comes in, just, uh, you know, just do your thing.
Alright, alright. Hey, excuse me, sir. Uh, you got time to talk about, uh, I just wanna see what, uh, what you got for anything you can help.
Going to a doctor's office?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. If you can just help me, uh, really quick, I just wanna go ahead and, uh, get, uh, get a couple of questions for you. Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. Uh, if you, uh, what, what are some things that, uh, you wanna, you wanna see here, uh, changed in the city? Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, see, I, I, I'm, uh, I'm one of the campaign managers, uh, I'm, uh, that's, uh, running. He's, uh, name's, uh, Harold Clapton. Yeah, he, and he, uh, you see, he, he's, uh, he's definitely, uh, Yeah, he's definitely wanting, wants some change around here. He was just, uh, wanting to know. Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm just kidding.
Lou.
There's no one here.
You got a guy that's gonna be coming out of Ward B any second.
Let me stand right here with the clipboard.
Hey, he said fuck the Democratic Party.
What'd he say?
Fuck the Democratic Party.
Right?
We're not Democrats, we're Republicans.
Excuse me, sir?
Yeah.
You got a, you got a couple of minutes?
No, I really don't.
Okay, uh, the, okay, real quick, like thirty seconds. On a, on a, on a scale of one to five stars, you know, how would you rate your experience here? And what could we do to make it better?
Um,
Maybe lower.
I guess five. You guys are pretty good, actually.
Oh, wow.
Okay, we're doing a good job here, so it's good here.
You don't have no complaints. You don't, no complaints about the price. And a forty-five dollars is a lie. Would you, would you agree?
Forty-five dollars is a lie?
Means seventy-five, John. I'm sorry, seventy-five, seventy-five. Wouldn't you agree?
Seventy-five?
Yeah, wouldn't you agree?
Tim, what are, what are you doing? Uh, one out of five stars.
See, what we're trying to do is we're trying to lower, lower that to forty-five. You, you think you can be on board with that?
I think that's amazing, yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, so, uh, my campaign manager, uh, uh, or, uh, he's running for, uh, city camp, uh, oh, my city council. His name's Harold Clapton and, uh, he's, he's trying to, he's trying to lower.
Claxton, John.
Oh, sorry.
Harold Claxton, yes.
Oh, sorry, it's Harold Claxton. Yeah.
Harold Claston, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's, uh, and he's trying to lower these rates. Uh, cause we, that, that's the thing. Someone gets stabbed in here or are out there technically. If someone gets stabbed and they have to come in here, I mean, that's seventy-five dollars. And they get stabbed and it's seventy-five dollars. Yeah, so it's just like, so, yeah, we're just trying to, trying to make the community.
Not even their faults when they get stabbed.
Oh, hey, Harold.
Oh, hey, how's it going? Sorry.
Um, yeah, I gotta get out of here, though. Appreciate you guys.
Alright, yeah.
Thank you for the inputs. We appreciate it.
Is there another guy in here?
How many of y'all were fucking talking in that? I come back and I'll do it.
Well, it was just me.
He's, he's saving medical expenses for two hours.
This guy's gonna come out of Ward B any second. Get ready.
Yeah, put the clipboard.
Oh, yeah. My god.
Let, let me do the talking first and then I'll cut it to Lou and then if John wants to play.
Wait, wait.
This guy might be a hard fish to reel in.
I got that last guy right when he.
Here he is, right here, right here, right here.
Excuse me, sir, you got two minutes?
Move, move. You don't got two minutes. Don't chase him, oh my god.
Why? We're acting like salesmen over here. What are we doing?
Jesus Christ.
Get all the inputs, weekends.
By not chasing people, that's gonna be wrong.
Every input's valuable.
I would say let's go to the, um, the Den of Sin, but it would be kinda bad if you showed up in a liquor bar.
I'm not trying to push it.
I know, I'm just saying, if we went to the Den of Sin, I think.
We could just stand outside.
I know, but I think it would just be like, your city councilman is trying to go to the Den of Sin, like.
I mean, to be fair, he, like, no, to be fair, the residents.
Trying to save the people.
The residents want more bars, so to be fair, we're going there.
I need to get higher.
To maybe act, get more bars.
Where is the Den of Sin?
Bahama Mama's needs to be opened more and treated.
Yeah, they really do.
And the vanilla unicorn. Where's that? Bahama Mama's here.
No, it's vanilla unicorn. They just have it at a different location.
Oh, damn, that's some good shit. What?
He's not okay.
Oh, god, my controller. Okay, we good.
So where's the, where's the next location? What are we doing?
I mean, we can walk across the street.
Yeah, let's go across the street. I wanna see if there's anybody at the precinct.
Oh, god, my controller.
Yeah, cause I can't find.
There's like three cars here, but nobody here.
Yeah, it's probably people that flew out.
Hey, did you guys see that new episode of Flash Gordon's?
Oh my god.
Are you really talking about the Flash Gordon's right now?
Oh, there's one car here. There could be somebody.
I'm looking on my nineties references.
Alright, let, I, uh,
Hey, did you guys know that OJ guy just got, uh, acquitted?
Hey, I, I need Ryan, I need Ryan and Lou in front of me. We're gonna head into the precinct just to see if there's anybody there.
Can we go in?
Thank you. I've been in here before. Probably a lot. Keep doors unlocked. Yep, okay. Oh my god, I, I lagged the moment that I fucking got next to the doors.
I should've held the door for yous.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Fucking scared.
I can't, I can't fucking move cause you're my fucking way.
I think they're all out. Let's just do it.
Oh, look at this. Look at this. Vote Daniel Ziegler.
Unauthorized individuals are not allowed past this point. Dolph Ziggles? Is that Ryan Nemeth's big brother?
We're coming back. I'm good old Alex.
Alexander.
Breaking law, breaking the law, breaking the law. I went around past that point. Oh shit, that's not good for your campaigns.
There's a cop bike.
There is no one's here.
You guys wanna do sick tricks on BMX?
So what?
Sick tricks on BMX bikes for a campaign?
Hey, did the lights turn off at the hospital? Am I seeing things?
I see, look, right, please.
No, it's just dark. It's just dark in there.
Hey, yo, uh, real quick.
Should we like go in this booth and every time a cop comes in, we go ask him for the tickets? Just stop here, wait for tickets.
Both ways before you cross the street, homie.
We'll save that for the future. That's a future non, non.
And we just go, hey, dude, hey, sir, how you doing?
Oh, my, he's just trying to do a kickflip.
Yeah, lose a businessman now. I gotta do a different character if we're gonna do shit like that.
How?
Did you get ran over?
I hit the John. How you guys doing? I got some of his skateboard.
Are you riding, you, I can't, I cannot see the skateboard.
I can't see either.
I told you to try to tell him.
When I got, uh, uh, picked up by Kalatapin and she took me to the hospital, it was on that Invincible skateboard.
I thought you were gonna go lay down. What happened to you?
Yeah, I was talking to some guy around the corner and the car hit me.
Oh, yeah.
Say, listen, see, this is why it has to be made. Now he has to pay seventy-five dollars.
Let's stay outside.
This is what we're talking about. See, now you gotta pay seventy-five dollars. Isn't that, isn't that ridiculous?
Yeah.
Uh, you know what, uh, mister dude at the desk here?
Oh my god.
This one's on us.
I don't see how you.
Having a meet up in time.
I actually, Lou, Lou, give, whenever he comes out, give the guy, give, give him thirty-five bucks.
Give us some, give us some five bucks.
We'll, we'll definitely win some votes there.
Shit, my bad.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll take care of your buddies here, okay? Uh, we'll, uh, As soon as, as soon as he gets out of here, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and refund him that money.
Alright. There he is.
Ah, goddamn feeling better, buddy.
Lou, you gotta give him the cash.
You helping a motherfucker out.
Hey, what's your numbers? You know, this visit was on us.
Uh, no, no, I'm pretty, no, I'm good, buddy.
Are you sure? Are you sure? I mean, that was, that was, again, it was ridiculous. Seventy-five dollars when he just walked out of here, you know?
Well, listen, if you're looking for us, so let's, let's help you out.
Nah, oh shit, uh, hold on. Uh, my social number will be one forty-six.
One forty-six.
Give cash.
Give him a hundred.
Alright, bet.
Give him a hundred, yeah.
Oh, no, that's one four seven, shit.
That works.
Slash, no. Give cash.
Four, was it?
One four six.
Four six, one hundred.
Appreciate it.
There you go. That's, that's, that's for your inconvenience here that we're hopefully trying to fix here.
Yeah, definitely did. I appreciate that for sure.
Hey, y'all take care of yourselves. Actually, go home and get yourself some rest.
I might want to put like, uh, another little, little thing. I might put like speed bumps or something on every street, cause these fucking cars.
We got that, we got that.
All, all these streets just need to be fixed.
We got, uh, we got potholes, speed bumps, all that, yeah.
It'd be something to stop these motherfuckers. I appreciate y'all. I appreciate anything I do.
Yeah.
Of course. You, you guys take care of yourselves. Get some rest.
Have a good night, fellas.
Fix industrial streets.
There's quicker.
I'm writing that down.
No, this is like, are you guys actually writing this stuff down?
Right, Zach is.
Zach is, but I.
Bet. Because if I, if I get to the council, this will work.
If I write it down, you gotta write it. Oh dude, when, when we gotta do like a, a public debate or something, we got it. This is what we're doing for.
Okay, I have, I have a perfect thing. This will be perfect publicity to you. I just saw in events-
Debate against the other person, we're just talking to the people.
I just saw in events, everyone citywide is invited to a wedding, the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Ooh.
Perfect, that's perfect for you. Don't, don't really talk, but like say, I'm trying to get in the city council, just don't like ask too many questions, but that would be great.
I'm not, I'm not gonna just try to push it on them. I'll be like, hey, how's it going? My name's Harold Claxton.
Yeah, Harold, yeah, exactly. That's, that's how you do it.
I know, I'll be like, I'll be like, my name's Harold. I, I'm currently working, trying to get into the city council.
Let me see, let me make sure, let me get the times.
That's what you need to do, do your first and last name. Then everyone, then whenever you get on stage.
Like president has the person that talks? What is that called?
Where is, uh, not serving notifications. What am I looking for?
I'll look it up later.
Events, events is what I'm looking for. Events, here we go.
Not secretary of-
Yeah, Jackie and Christopher Luciano invite you to their wedding, eight PM EST on June twenty-eighth.
So that'll be what, seven, me and John?
Two oh five at the Little Italy Cathedral. It'd be seven year olds time.
Seven hours time, okay.
Uh, yes.
Wait, so we have to go on?
Well, I'll be off then anyway.
Friday.
Oh, Friday, okay.
Yeah, I'm on Friday. Oh yeah, that's my first day. I'd definitely do that. Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna be hammered.
So everybody needs to get-
And this is also, this is also perfect. Reception after at Rotterdam.
Yeah, okay.
Opportunities for-
New opportunities to make something big out of this.
Networking.
I mean, it's not, and it is in our, it is in our, um, dirt, uh, whatever the fuck they call it.
Nineties is the peak of networking too, so.
Two oh five.
Yeah, we gotta walk you around it.
And we definitely need to get money. I, I'd ask, I'd ask Schlick if you could give us a little bit of money for campaign funding. And we do, I think it would be a good idea to have cell phones.
So here, here's, here's what I'm thinking.
So we can have cell phones here in the nineties? What, what do they have?
It, they had the old brick and nail cell phones.
Let me talk to Alex tomorrow. I'll message him while I'm at work. Let's see if we can meet up with him tomorrow night. Let's all get on. We'll meet back at the Rotterdam. See if he can-
Twenty minutes before, all of us talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Like we are.
And what we'll try to plan out, if he can give us some funds, one for cell phones because we need to keep in touch, and two for funding for the campaign management. And then if we can get that rolling, and then Friday, Friday, what we can do is, um, go to the wedding. We'll, we'll order, we'll dress, we'll dress a little bit casual more than-
Kinda like how I am.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
We'll dress up nicely there, we'll, uh-
Just a button up and some pants.
Don't bring the clipboards, just ask them what their thoughts are in Liberty City in general, just like-
Oh yeah, it's a professional thing, it's on the mind.
I'd, listen, I, I know y'all wanted like, learn, like ask them stuff, but I think this would be just a great opportunity to get your name out there. So I think we should just do names and not ask anything.
Well, the wedding, we're gonna-
Yeah, we don't ask anything. You, you just converse and we just be-
At the wedding, just, just be yourselves and like add a little bit in there. But when we're at the reception, we'll just start, not really interfering, but trying to have a conversation. Someone really break the fucking fire scene shirt again? Alright, somebody write down a new fire scene shirt. God damn it.
Alright, I got it. Hold on.
Or the hydrant, fire hydrant.
It's always that one too, it's the weird part. There was a cop right there.
John, are you getting off with them?
He's the cop.
I'm gonna stop the stream at, at twelve.
But you're gonna stay on, you're gonna stay on with me?
Maybe.
Okay.
John doesn't work tomorrow. I have to be up at seven thirty in the morning.
Cause I'm a pit.
I can't do what I did last night, John, but I can stay up.
Multiple whiskey high balls. Whiskey, square pizza croissants in my inventory. Oh shit, I got a bag of cocaine.
Can I have a croissant?
In my inventory.
Yeah, let's get rid of that.
I, how do I do that?
Okay, let's go over here and throw it in the dumpster.
Yeah, go throw it in the dumpster.
I'll be right back.
I was just RPing having cocaine. I actually had cocaine. I don't know where I got it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna just stay at the hospital, see if any pops up in like fifteen minutes, and if I don't see anybody, then we'll call it a night. We did some pretty good jobs anyway.
Okay, was that it?
I mean, you could've searched the thing and then, oh, nevermind.
Nope, I dropped it. Do not search that bag.
Don't do it.
There's cocaine in that bag.
Cocaine bear.
I had two baggies of cocaine on me, so I guess I wasn't lying. Where did I get cocaine?
Alright, did you, did you throw it? Did you throw it in the bin?
It said, it's in that, that backpack that's sitting out in front of the bin.
Hey, how's it going?
I think when I dropped it, that's what it does. I guess it makes-
My name's Harold Claxton. I'm, uh, running for city council. Mind if me and my fellows ask you a few questions?
I'm gonna stand back on this one, so we don't surround him with a bunch of people and overwhelm him.
Oh yeah, I, I respect that. Uh, so let, let me ask you a question.
But being near-
What's your thoughts here on the whole medical situation?
John, you be the guy.
You got ran over by a car, paying seventy-five dollars to a- Tell me what he says, I'm going to death him.
I mean, I think it just depends on the situation you're in financially. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think, yeah, maybe, I think actually seventy-five is a bit too much in my opinion.
Alright, I absolutely agree with that, but hear me out on this. For one, we're gonna lower that down to at least forty-five dollars. That makes it a little bit easier for everybody. A little bit thirty dollars down. On top of that, we have a, we have a veteran that's a homeless. He did three tours and he has, he has no money, he has no insurance. We're gonna work on an insurance plan for everybody.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. I think-
Oh yeah.
That's a great idea.
On top of that, like, you come to this medical center and you don't even get treated. You, you're treating yourself, especially with seventy-five dollars is kinda nuts. We're definitely gonna start working on getting some more employment around here. On top of that, equal business pay for everybody.
Yeah, that's, that sounds like, that sounds great as well. Every, everything you say right now just sounds amazing. Should be like this.
I, I definitely agree with that. We're trying to make Liberty City amazing for everybody. We need to make it safe and comfortable.
Yeah, definitely we are. We're making great fucking points.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. That's, yeah, you guys are doing an amazing job right now. What I'm, what I'm hearing-
This is real campaigning. We got great points. We're taking suggestions from the people. We are for the people.
I have a whole list of things that we can go over if you have time.
Harold Claxton, for the people.
Uh, I'm kinda busy right now, but if you, you can ask me like two more questions, I can answer some, or whatever.
Alright, well, well, let me ask you this. In, in terms of this whole entire Liberty City, what do you think that we can improve on to make it better other than the things I already said?
Um, I'm not too sure. See, I haven't been in the city as long to witness-
I died? What happened?
How long have you been here?
Uh, I haven't been here, let's say, over a week, two maybe.
Damn, not even a warning.
Oh, well, in, in the span of the week, what's your, what's your thoughts been on Liberty City? Anything been going on?
Uh, it's, it's been alright, but just as you said-
Yep, that one's on me. I didn't even pay attention to that.
We need a bit more staff.
And now look at you, now you gotta pay seventy-five dollar fee.
He just got fucking, he's bleeding over there, I don't know why.
It's okay, Ryan's got him, Ryan's got him, we're good.
Okay, okay. Sorry, continue.
I'm checking in, see if you can let me go.
Yeah, I'm, it's not much really, I think.
I notified EMS too, right before.
We are working on a lot of things, especially the airport problems. Everybody's getting delayed and having to wait so long to get in here. It's ridiculous.
Oh yeah. Oh yeah, oh yeah.
Oh yep, I'm waking up at the front desk, on top of the front desk.
But, um, yeah, if, if you have any other questions, we'll be around and, uh, I, I'll make sure to ask a few more people around here. As long as I got your vote for, uh, city council, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, what's your name again?
My name's Harold Claxton.
Harold Clark, Clarkson?
Claxton, yes sir.
Claxton, oh yeah, you definitely have my vote. But what you're saying, yeah, you definitely have my vote.
Alright, I appreciate it and thank you for your time. Sorry, I didn't mean to like, cut you off while you were running.
Goddamn controller, I need to buy a new controller, it's so fucking bad.
Alright, well, we'll say, say, you have a great rest of your night, alright? Thank you.
I cannot do this anymore.
Appreciate you guys.
Course.
W.
Here you go, Lou.
What the fuck even happened?
He, I died.
Uh, hunger or thirst or something.
And the ambulance-
Why does it make him bleed if he's dying of hunger?
Oh shit! Blue, get away.
Stop him! Stop him right now!
I just had to unplug my controller, cause I couldn't watch. I still can't watch.
Oh god, Zach, that's a game member. Zach, that's a game member.
No, 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 don't, don't, just-
Don't, don't talk to him.
This controller and this wire.
Oh god, fuck, where's that, where's?
I know how you feel.
I was saying, I was saying, no, don't, don't, don't say anything.
Alright, WASD.
He's skirt skirted.
Yeah.
Is that a real person over there across the way?
Well, there's someone doing it.
Actually, I think so.
Oh, there a cop coming back to the precinct? It's a cop coming back to precinct!
Oh my god.
There's a cop! There's a cop!
Oh yeah, let's, uh, let's go, let's run, let's run, let's run.
I'm gonna see if the real person- I'm just gonna run past him. Is there something on top of his car? This is an NPC. Is this one of the ones that gets on wheels?
Oh, oh, hold on.
Just go slowly walk, don't hit me.
He's gonna hit you if you keep fucking walking in front of him.
Oh, nevermind. There you go.
No, I'm just walking casual, NPC.
Hey, officer, how you doing? Hey, do you, uh, you got a few minutes?
This is about your city council campaign.
Ah, I know what we talked about you earlier at the-
Police station, but I think you're busy with a chase.
Alright, let, 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 let's, uh, let's go to this side, I don't wanna cut this off.
Here we go.
John, 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 he's right here. He's right, we need that police car.
What do you, what do you think needs to be improved around here first?
Watch who gets out of this fucking police car. Watch.
Yeah.
If he gets out, watch. The ginger, no beard.
Oh yeah, I respect that.
I, we've discovered he had brown hair though.
Oh, that, that's respectable. A lot of people aren't really into the whole politician stuff, but I'm just trying to make this place look-
Brown hair too, I think. Just, 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 look at him, look at him in the car, look.
I, I got a lot of things written down. Yeah, I'll, I'll just say more. Uh, for example, you know, whenever you, I, I know it doesn't work for cops, but in any situation, people get stabbed or ran over, they gotta go help themselves. Seventy-five dollars to get checked in, because one, we don't got enough medics, and two, that's a really high expense for people that didn't do the harm. I think we should lower that down to like a forty-five, make it a little bit thirty dollars down, and then on top of that, we can run some insurance on the people that really need it.
Affordable for the little guy.
Oh yeah, absolutely. And definitely more employment, because I, I've been in this town for a month, I won't lie to you. And as far as I've seen, I've only seen two minutes, and that's like, what, every once a week, boys?
Oh yeah.
I think we should just get more employment, and if we can just get better pay for everybody, or equal pay, makes it even better.
Yeah, every time we go to the, every time we go to the hospital, and there is someone there, and we're like, hey, you got more people here? And the doctors be like, no, sorry, we're always short-staffed every day. So yeah, it's, we need more. Need to do something about the employment, so we're, we're here to fix that.
Yeah, it's a very much easier said than done when it comes to the whole employment deal. You have to convince people they wanna be firefighters first.
Oh yeah, I mean, but if you think about it this way, no disrespect, but if everybody puts an equal job in like saving the city, even the, the trash men that try to pick up the garbage from the city, I feel like even them should get paid. Equal pay would be a little bit easier for everybody, so they don't feel a little bit lesser, or even more powerless.
It is a pretty dirty job.
What, what do you mean? Explain, sorry.
Uh, we're not talking about raising, you know, money for like, you know, prices for, uh, you know, businesses and stuff like Public Works is what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, probably, yeah, and everything else.
Equal pay for police officers, firefighters, medics. Not everything has to be so low.
A lot of people have a lot of, um, what's it, a lot of people are in public, public works jobs, like garbage, you know? I mean, I live here in Algonquin, I'm a police officer, I'm, I'm a public worker, but you know, when you get such a large portion of the population with the pay increase, products and goods are also gonna rise. That's just the natural flow of things, right?
But we'll also think about maybe implementing, you know, like a, like a hazardous duty pays, you know, whenever, anytime, any, any employee, city employee encounters, you know, hazardous duty like officers or firefighters, you know?
Well, maybe here in the police, we get our, our medical bills comped. We, uh, we, we still pay the seventy-five dollars, but it's more so a deposit where, you know?
Well, think about it in the essence of people who don't have jobs, like unemployment, for example. We have, uh, we have somebody that did three tours in the Gulf War. He, uh, he's unemployed, he's homeless. He doesn't even have a home, he has no food. We can always work on either like making the prices lower to that forty-five that I was talking about, or starting a whole new insurance plan for the people.
Same with the homeless vet that we ran into today too.
That, that's what I just bought up.
And you know, another couple of examples we got, uh, from other officers is, you know, like more, like, uh, newer cruisers and like better weaponry, you know? Drop themselves for, you know, such situations in which it is needed. You know, that's something we can, we can try to look into.
Fine in both of those categories.
Well, what's your thoughts on, uh, possibly-
Those of us don't, don't agree.
Uh, I think we need more gun laws, actually.
Well, let's say, for example, like, you're working at, uh, a bank, you get robbed, but you don't got a gun. I feel like, uh, the majority of people need guns. I'm not speaking of people who don't just have guns, but the actual people that need them.
Duty to a street state, right?
Oh yeah, I completely understand that, but again, we're just trying to work out the key to the buzz around here.
Less guns on the street, the better. Makes everyone-
Oh yeah, absolutely. We're, we're trying to make this place safe and, a, a good place for people to stay, because Liberty City is, is a very nice place. Okay.
If the main gun law we're trying to entertain is for business owners to protect themselves, like maybe a shotgun's fine.
I didn't eat anything at all, god damn it.
Business owners can get gun licenses, like getting, getting shotguns on the street just opens up the avenue for more people to get shotguns. You know who gets shotguns? Me, and the emergency services unit. I'm, uh, moving my way up quick.
Gotcha, you're needing-
We picked the one fucking stickler.
I know, right?
Oh fuck.
Yeah.
Just keep, just keep on going over a few things. You don't have to push too much on it.
Is there anything you think you can be improved here for the police department of the cities?
I'm learning lessons. A long gun on every car.
Bro, I don't have any food ever since I fucking-
I still look to entertain that idea.
After party, I don't have shit.
Where the fuck did you go?
You guys don't have long guns, long guns in every car?
I have a long gun.
Come here, I got a bunch of fucking twinkies.
Was that a rookie talkins, you know, talkins a little too much? Or is that like a legit, that meant needs?
Just walk right in front of me.
Okay, so.
Hey, how's it going?
Three twinkies.
Three twinkies?
Three twinkies.
I need more than that, I'm a fat ass.
Oh, hold on, hold on, I can, I can get it, I can get it. Don't, don't, don't.
Yeah.
Give.
Oh damn.
Fuck. Put that there. And now give.
Four seven squad, yeah.
Whole box, let's go. And then here's three waters.
I have plenty of water, I just don't have fucking anything to eat, cause fucking Jay's bad. Alright, we gotta get back over there.
Okay.
Run, 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 run.
Thank you for your times, officers.
Oh, there's people that pulled up right here, hold on.
Vote Harold's.
Oh, those are the corrupt ones, Zach.
Yeah, these are, I think the city ones are the corrupt ones.
I feel like I should try it again.
Hey, thank you guys.
Without, without, without you guys near, I feel like I could try it.
Yeah.
Run, oh, got it!
Oh, is that kaleidoscope?
Well, it's like a party going on out here.
Oh, okay, I'll stay over here.
Yeah, it's neat. Is that a drunky? No, that's, he's supposed to be redheaded, isn't he?
That's, um, that's, uh, that's Jay's mom.
Did you talk to that guy right there? That's just chilling on his phone?
Oh yeah, that's a firefighter.
Oh yeah, ask him about what-
Yeah, how you doing over here?
I'll go walk with you.
Oh.
Oh, I'm very smart.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey.
You know, with your license, it means it sounds like a disco movie.
You got about five minutes? Okay, she, she, I think she left. She got checked out.
You got a party going on, you got, oh, oh, he's dancing now.
Not these guys.
It sounds like a disco.
Oh. You just had to dance in front of him, you made him look, you made yourself look ugly.
Oh god, no.
You don't rest here today, sis?
What's that, oh, no for?
Cause it's the corrupt cops inside that killed me.
Oh. Hold on, let, let me, let me talk, let me go in there.
What's that, drunky from right in front of us?
You go for it.
Stay outside.
No, no.
Tell them we're gonna clean them up.
Question. There they are, black suit, yeah.
Alright, oh.
Hey.
Hey, come back, come back, come back, come back.
Hey, folks. Harold Claxton, clean up the cities.
They just completely cut me off.
Those detectives, yes it is them. No, you're right.
I'm gonna talk to that guy that just went into the hospital. I got an idea. You guys stay outside. I'm, I'm just vibing. Ha ha. This is my last one. Gotta make the last one, let's count.
Y'all hear that?
What?
The girl, the girl's prostitute.
Well, yeah.
Oh my god.
I think those prostitutes, she said, they said I like your material.
Hey, how's it going?
Get more diseases that way. I'm just gonna step a little closer, I'm just gonna sneak closer.
I gotta deafen myself again?
They know Kowalski. He's hot. His wife's dead.
Noah Wazowski.
I don't think he's looking.
I hear him.
Okay. Ah, they're fucking assholes.
Wanna see if we can, uh, get her attention?
Did, uh, but, uh, by chance, did they say prostitutes?
Oh my god.
No, I have a magazine that I'm in.
Okay, yeah, I didn't take you for one of those types.
No, I don't fuck people, I just take new photos.
But, uh, you know, by chance, where can I find this magazines?
Oh my god.
Um, so-
God damn it, Lou, we're trying to run a campaign.
I'm, I'm asking for, I'm asking for our friends, I'm asking for our friends.
So, uh, my manager, Mr. Daniel Ziegler, he, uh, I don't know if he's fucking putting it out yet.
Dude, break this down, break this down!
I, I wrote it down.
Nobody told me that they're out yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're getting like insights and kind of things.
Yeah, I guess so. I guess he got it first, that fucking cop, whatever he is.
John, you still recording?
Yeah.
Alright, it's perfect, you got her on voice recording in your pocket.
There's something off about them cops.
Yeah, I know.
Especially those dudes.
Yeah, I know. I think they're enough.
They, uh, between you and me, they, uh, they, they took me aside earlier, and they beat, and they beat me down, and in the back alley. So, yeah.
They did?
Yeah, and then, because they're corrupt, they're corrupt cops.
Oh my gosh. I bet if you vote for Harold Claxton, this won't happen no more.
Oh my god.
Don't say nothing, don't say nothing.
Yeah, it's one of the reasons why I chose to be, uh, besides Harold. I want, I want change in this city.
You don't know I'm related yet.
So you're running for mayor? Or?
No, my, my, Harold, uh, is running for city council.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, we know, we want, we want, we want change, uh, yeah, we know, uh, what was his name?
We're here for the people.
Alex, Alex what?
Fuck yes.
Alexander Schlichenmeyer?
Yeah, Alexander Schlichenmeyer is, is, uh, who we're, uh, uh, who we're with, and, uh, yeah, but-
Wait, isn't he running for mayor?
What are you doing against?
I'm not, I'm not saying that out loud. I'm in Discord!
Oh, my bad. Anyway.
You're hearing things, you're hearing things.
Yeah, I know, right? Uh, but yeah, he's, uh, I met him in person, and he's, uh, he's a real nice guy, and he actually, uh, he helped me out whenever I was, uh, getting beaten. So yeah, it, it, it changed my life, and then, ever since that day, I, I chose to, I chose to stand by his side.
What the fuck is this conversation?
The whole north district, and they agreed too. Whole North District, and they agreed too. They've had too much of these guys.
Yeah, fuck those guys.
Prostitutes.
Unless it's like uh, that fucking one cop that I was saying was real hot. Size him, but the rest of them fuck.
He was kinda, he was kinda cute.
No, 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 he wasn't here, his name's Kowalski.
I had to get off, I'm sorry, it's like twelve.
Yo, I think I met that guy before.
Yeah, I met that guy too.
He was pretty good looking.
He is good looking.
I will not deny that, I will not deny him as his good looks.
She nodded.
Yeah, but I don't think I'm allowed to vote for anyone else besides uh Mr. Ziegler, because I worked for him, so.
Oh, that's, that's fine, that's okay.
Before I get off, I'm gonna fucking make a poster real quick, just for the.
So, Ziegler running for what? Tell me.
May is the op.
Yeah, he's Democrat.
Yeah, the opponent, he's the op.
Okay, so you're trying, you're trying to tell me out loud he won. Okay, yeah, everyone's got the right to vote for whoever they want. We just here to.
Yeah, we, we're not, we're not here to put.
Make Liberty City, a little bit of each taste.
Yeah, exactly, that's why.
And the signal that you gotta do that, then we, we all for it.
We, we can, we can win up to everyone, so much, a lot of people in the city so far. Just seeing how, how much change they want, and uh, the main thing on the list is corrupt cops.
Yeah, I agree, I don't fucking like them.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're, we're trying to fix that.
There's a lot of fucking weird guys out here, and they don't do nothing about them. So when people like me have to.
It's really unfortunate, really unfortunate.
Yeah, it is. Well. I guess I'm gonna go find my car, I don't know where I put it.
Well, I hope he finds it, we're gonna do some more campaigns, you know, to help Liberty City be better.
Well, thanks, and uh, have fun with your campaign.
You too, it's nice to meet yous.
You have a good one, miss.
You too.
My controller's still not working.
Is it your controller, or is it?
I forgot to take a picture of my fucking character.
The light's on, but you know, I'm pretty sure it's fu-
Are you sure it's the controller, or are you sure like?
Do I have open mic?
Hit, hit X on your, on your keyboard, and then move.
You just tend to press that button.
Okay, and hit X again, now move.
Nope, nothing, I'm just gonna WASD like I'm a new one. It's so hard though. Am I, am I open miking?
No, you're good. You were a second ago.
You were a second ago.
Damn it, fuck, I should've took a screenshot of my guy real quick before I did that.
Hop back on, Zach, there's not gonna be a lot.
I'm not going in queue for that shit.
I don't think there's gonna be a queue, if you're two hundred or above, you're first right away.
I gotta take a screenshot of my guy real quick, so I can put him on the uh, make a poster for the campaign.
Yeah, I don't, uh, if you, if you uh, if you uh, if you hopped out and then hopped, and hopped back on, I, you shouldn't.
I'll fucking try, this.
I need to make sure I clarify when I'm blocking Discord.
My guy. Bust a rhyme now.
Somebody coming in hot, oh, there's blondies.
One out of eight, I'll take it. I'll fucking take it. I'll take that dick in my mouth any day.
Hell yeah. I do wanna use this parking garage at, at some point. Or this little parking shack. Stop here, please wait for your ticket. Twenty-four hours, sixteen dollars, up to one hour, five dollars. Start charging cops, oh my god, I almost got hit by a car.
Alright, I'm connected, cool.
Bust a rhyme now. Circle around those guys.
No, 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 didn't hit me, no, stop, 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 stop.
I'm trying.
It's difficult on a keyboard.
I'm trying to get a screenshot, of all of us together.
There's only three of us.
Yeah, I know, you messed up the shot.
I'm fighting my invisible friend, leave me alone.
Who was it?
That may be another RP moment, my, being, me by myself around cops, just punching the air, like, what the hell are you guys, what the hell are you doing? And I'm fighting my friend. Throw some more punches, what, who are you fighting? My friend? Yep, 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 here we go. Oh, is it bedtime yet? Oh, twelve oh seven, yeah, it's bedtime. I'm gonna have to get out of here. Oh god!
Damn it.
Accidentally. Escape, yeah, that's how I do it. Sorry, had it me too, I was trying to click on something else, but it threw a punch. I'm not there for the picture anymore. Oh man, I want some food, I'm hungry, Johnny Hungy.
Johnny Hungy.
Meat man, I want some meat.
Oh!
In my mouth.
Cardiac kick, whoa!
And some marijuana, I want plenty of that for bed. And some water, plenty of water, I had some drinks tonight.
He said, and water, plenty of water.
Yeah, I gotta work in, I gotta be up in five hours. Five hours, white power, hot shower. I'll take y'all pissing with me. I think it. What can you say Wednesday? I'd fuck with Kevin, but he's sleeping.
Kevin Bussey?
My brother Kevin, Kevin Rushee.
C A M P, yeah.
God damn, that sounds sexy.
We're still alive.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go hide in a fucking room while I take this screenshot.
How long does it take you to take a piss?
Brilliant fucking long.
Oh yeah?
He's doing that, stop.
Oh yeah, poppy.
Go again, stop, go again.
Oh my god.
These, they're grownups.
Did you pee at all this week?
Alright. Alright, got that done, that was quick.
Alright, I'm getting off.
Alright, well, I'm gonna go take my fucking bike and change my character back to on those original.
Go pee in your mouth.
Pee in my mouth? I'll definitely be on tomorrow night, maybe, probably.[1773.91]